All right. Sounds like we're ready to go here. Hi, everyone. So first, I'm going to call to order the Newton Planning Board Public Meeting. It is 7:00 PM. To start things off here, we will salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we have a few public hearings on the agenda today. The first one we have is Thomas McElroy of Newton is requesting a public hearing for a two-lot subdivision at 26 Amesbury Road, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 10, block 7, lots 20. Ready to go?
Great. My name is Dennis Quintal. I'm the engineer for Tom and Nora. They're sitting in the front right here. And so they own the Newton Greenhouse, which is 26 Amesbury Road. It's about 14 acres, map 10, block 7, lot 20. We were started on this project doing a perimeter survey, boundary survey, topographic map, and locating all the features on the property, flagging the wetlands because there was quite a bit of wetlands on the site. So the intent of their, of this plan and this subdivision here is to subdivide the house lot from the greenhouse lot. So you can see in, in blue, the perimeter of their property. And the pink line that we show through here is where we wanted to subdivide the house from the greenhouse buildings that are on the property. So we had Jim Gove do a high-intensity soil map because we have to make sure that the lot we're creating for the house, the small lot, meets the town requirements as far as lot size by soil type. So Jim Gove did the high-intensity soil map, and we were able to come up with the property line that shows the house lot would be 2 and 1/2 acres and that the greenhouse lot would be 11 and 1/2 acres. The wells are shown on each, and the house lot has a state-approved septic plan. The greenhouse lot, we show a 4,000-square-foot area in the back where test pits were done. And we have submitted that plan to the town to create, to get a subdivision approval. I'm not sure what the tax map numbers are will be for these lots, so I have to check with the assessor. So I'm not sure if the house lot will be lot 20 or 20-2 or the greenhouse lot be 20 or 20-2. But I can check with the assessor. She's in tomorrow, so I can check with her tomorrow. So I need to get the correct tax map number. I also added a sheet for recording because, as you can see, this plan has quite a bit of writing through text, and it's very detailed with all the contours, the grading, and the high-intensity soil mapping. So the, I have a sheet that just shows a lot of the stuff that's important, so I created that. So that would be the plan for recording, and we will have to provide a mile out for that for the board to sign. We'll also need to have state subdivision approval because the house lot is less than five acres, but the greenhouse lot is greater than five acres, so we don't really need to get a state approval for that. Everything over five acres doesn't need state approval. So we know we have to set the bounds. The stamps and signatures by the professionals have to be shown on the final plan, and again, providing a mile out to be signed. So that kind of summarizes what we're trying to do with this. It's pretty simple. The calculations that I have for the lots, lot size by soil type, shows that the soils on the house lot will be greater than, provide enough soils for greater than 1.2 lots. So with that, I think that that's most of what I need to say, and I guess I can answer any questions that you have.
I don't have any immediate questions. Does anybody else?
Yeah, this is, this is pretty simple. No rail terrain alteration or anything like that.
Jen has her hand up. Jen, do you have comments that you'd like to make?
Go ahead, Jen.
She can't hear you.
Do you hear us?
Yeah, I don't think she can.
Can you reach her, Jim?
Have you sent something through the chat? Can we check if we're somehow muted?
She saw something. Looking.
Well, she can't see us either.
Right. Ms. Robson, can you hear us? I don't know if she could hear me, but Jen, if you can hear us, we can't hear you.
Jen, we can't hear you. Go ahead and speak to us. Yeah, Jen? No, we're not hearing a word you're saying.
Jim, the audio is coming through the laptop over there. Yep.
Hold on one second, Jen. Go ahead, try it. Nope, hold on, I'm just kidding. They're getting you off the laptop on the left there. They're going to switch it over.
Laptop's sitting over by the desk over there.
Give them one second. Hold on one second. There you go, we got you.
No, she's still coming out that laptop. It's just cranked up.
Yes.
Close enough.
Yes.
He's going to turn you up. Hold on one second. Yep, hold on one second, Jen. There you go, go ahead. You had to get rid of the feedback.
Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good to go.
Awesome.
Let me start again?
No, she could hear, she could hear us. We just couldn't hear her.
Yep, I can hear you guys loud and clear.
So Jen, it sounded like there was something that you wanted to bring up for this. Jim mentioned that you were raising your hand after.
Oh, I was just trying to get your attention to see if you guys could hear me. So please continue with the meeting.
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. No terrain alteration or anything like that. It's just really straight subdivision.
It's all existing conditions, so we aren't changing anything on the property.
Okay.
Just making it, subdividing the lot, the house lot from the greenhouse lot.
Perfect.
So I'm going to make a motion to take jurisdiction.
Seconded.
Mr. Barad?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Papakristous?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Sorry. Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Jen, your thoughts on the subdivision?
It's actually a fairly straightforward subdivision. I mean, state subdivision approval is going to be needed for the lot. Obviously, there's, I had got an email from Dennis earlier today acknowledging that they need like the bounds, markers, some signatures, sort of standard conditions of approval for a two-lot subdivision. There's nothing extraordinary about this one, so those are my comments.
We ready to open it to the public?
Open the public hearing?
If anyone has comments? Is that the next step here, Jim?
You open the public hearing and then ask the public if they have any input?
Yes, that's what I was going for. So at this time, does anyone from the public have any thoughts or questions on this? Okay. Do we want to? Motion?
Motion to accept.
I'll second it.
With all the usuals.
That the board found the fact, following facts, that the plan falls within the scope of the applicable zoning ordinances and regulations for subdivisions, and the justice would be served by approving the application, and the conditions would be obtain all local, state, and federal permits, supply mile out with all necessary stamps, set new bounds, and supply new deeds to the town assessor.
Very good.
Who seconded that? Thank you. Mr. Moran? Now we return to Mr. Moran, who just re-entered. Mr. Barad?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Papakristous?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
So next up, we have the 125 Development NH Corp. of Plastow, New Hampshire, requests a public hearing for a compliance hearing on item number one of the notice of decision concerning phase two of their development off of South Main Street, Route 108. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, block 1, lots 27-3.
Good evening, Planning Board. Tom Leckburg, builder, construction manager for 125 Development, the applicant. What I'm asking to do, as you can see in the letter, is I have already built building one, and I would like to, and I have building permit for building two. And we would like to move our square foot allowance by the manager dot to allow it to us to build building four. So we're going to take this, slice it in half for now, take the square footage down to building number four. We have an application for a building permit in already with the building inspector. I took advice from John Ral and the town engineer how to go about this, and I reached out to New Hampshire DOT, and I received a letter back adjusting which buildings I can build as long as I stay underneath that 105,000 square feet, which we had a previous agreement with. And that's really all I'm asking for. I'm just asking to take the square footage out of the building two and add it to building four. Give me the ability to build building four. And then if somebody comes along with building two, we would do, so we did nine, maybe six, that would remain a one building, we just started to do 30,000 on it, whatever happens. But we'll be in front of you before that happens anyway, so. So just requesting the 37,500 to be building four. And obviously, we would complete all the roadway and everything that we need to do. In my opinion, it's a better way because of our roadway and all our fire suppression and everything would be completed as we complete building four because we will need all of it.
Any questions?
So you'll be doing the roadway in the parking lots heading down to four?
Right, correct. So. So the roadways completed to right here right now, to this area here, and we're completing all the way down past and get to building four?
So I have a couple of comments if you guys are ready, and I apologize if I'm a little off-kilter. We can't actually see you, so it's a little hard to judge where you are.
Do I need to move the?
No, because they don't get individual.
Oh, sorry.
He's just showing the roadway that he's going to complete around the buildings, Jen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so are you guys ready for my comments on this?
Sure.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are two different things. One of them is procedural. I had gotten notification that this, this compliance hearing of which the letter that Tom has, is talking about is the recommendation, or he asked for my opinion if that was the correct application because there isn't really an application for a compliance hearing if that was the right procedure. And I did agree that what he supplied was correct in addition to the overview of those four proposed buildings. The issue is whether or not the abutters were properly noticed. I think that we may need to have Jim speak to what was provided or if we have paperwork on the abutters being properly noticed per the procedures that you guys had updated last month.
May I speak? So we have a receipt of everything that was provided and how we noticed the abutters. It was already received from the town on May 15th. And it would be all information that was provided.
Go ahead, Jim.
I received a call from somebody who received a copy of an abutter notice from the applicant that was basically a copy of the letter that is the cover page to the application that you have. It lists neither date, time, nor location of the public hearing. Those are the three things that are statutorily required to be in the.
To be considered on an abutters notice.
Right.
Right.
So therefore, what was sent out was not an abutter notice, it was simply a copy of the same paperwork that you have.
Okay.
We didn't know the date of the, when we were going to end up getting the application in for, for the meeting. We were hoping sooner, actually, or later. The same people were abutted, all the same abutters were noticed prior to for different reasons, so. But if we have a procedural something wrong, I mean, it wasn't, nothing was said to me at the time, so in our receipt or our material, I would have thought there would have been some kind of correspondence to that effect.
So I will say, I don't normally see abutter notification verification, that's not typically my role, but if the application hasn't been noticed properly, you really should not continue with the application. I do want to put the comment that I think, with a few small things, I do think that this application is complete. I think it's likely reasonable, but there is the aspect of proper abutter notification. And I, you know, I don't normally see this, so this is not something I caught until I was made aware of it when I was notified.
Right. And unfortunately, by the time that we received notification from the abutter about what they received, it was past the time.
Right.
Even if you wanted to try to get a new one out, it wouldn't have been out within the 10 days.
Right.
So the only thing that we can do that I would suggest is, because we have two weeks before the next meeting, is that we get out an abutters notice.
Tomorrow.
Dating for our next meeting, make sure it's stated for the public hearing, make sure it's stated for our next meeting. And what was the other date?
Time, date, and place.
It's time and location and notice.
Yeah, so it'll be 7 o'clock.
I got you.
On that date here. And then, like Jen said, everything else seems to be copasthetic, so we got all of that. We just got to make sure that we move forward and that the proper abutter notices are out. And then once we do that, all the ducks are in a row, and we'll be all set.
Okay.
And then everything.
Yeah, I truly do think that this is an item that can be dealt with within one meeting, but it does have to be properly notified.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then, so with that, and I mean, the next, the very next item that we have on here is you've also requested a continuance for that as well.
Right, so you're fine with a continuance for the next meeting on this, right?
Yeah, no, we will continue 27-3 from today? Or are you talking about 27-4?
This one here. We're going to continue to the next meeting so you can get the compliance out.
Right, we'll get a compliance letter.
Hearing.
With the dates, the time, the location.
So we're going to continue that one?
Correct.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
Second.
Mr. Moran? Mr. Moran?
It looks like he may have signed off with his work computer.
Aye.
Yep.
There he goes.
Did you get it, sorry?
Mr. Barad?
Aye.
I switched from my phone to my computer.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye, he's back.
Mr. Papakristous?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Dennis is back. Did you get Dennis?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, I got him first.
Okay. So for the next item that we have on the agenda here, so we have the 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp. of Plastow, New Hampshire, requests a public hearing for an amended site plan at 3, 5, 7, and 9 Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. Property is referenced as Tax Map 14, block 1, lots 27-4. And it looks like you guys have requested a continuance to move this to June 10th?
Correct.
So Andrew, I have just a couple of comments, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
I think it's a reasonable request to continue it, request to continue it because obviously they haven't supplied updated information. I am a little concerned just about the timeframe it typically takes to get an amended site plan, knowing how backed up many of the engineering firms are, and I don't know who you're working with, Tom. But just that there are some options going forward that, you know, you don't want to just continue and continue applications without seeing progress. So I think it's perfectly reasonable to continue it again this evening, but it does need to provide adequate time for meter review, the town engineer to review, and we all sort of have had discussions on this application in the past about changes that may be needed. So allowing enough time for review for when we do get the drawings, but also allowing for enough notification for applicants. So there is the option of planning board continuing this evening, but if it keeps on going, there may be a point where it may make sense for the applicant to withdraw the application until they're ready, they have their materials that I think they're pretty clear on what they need to have. Or the planning board could deny an application is incomplete simply because you haven't been given information and it's been a number of continuances. So I just want to put that out there. I think it's very reasonable to continue tonight, but just know that it shouldn't go on and on and on.
So the reason that we're asking to continue it because it's a pretty much complicated situation, and to put a new Horizon Engineering is doing the work for us, and like everybody else, they're buried. But we got a pretty good grasp on it. I think we'll make it in the next meeting for sure. Like I said, 27-4 has been pretty contentious and lots of, you know, back and forth on it. We just want to make sure that it's pretty much mile already without some adjustments from the board. So I believe at this point, for what I, you know, dealt with Andrew, who will be representing it, he speaks that he will see you guys on the 10th, so. Took a little while to get him up to speed, but I think we can do that, so it should be okay.
Okay. Just wanted you guys to have that, but please get it to me with enough time to review.
I motion to continue.
Sorry. I don't think it's public, is it, at this point, is it, or?
There's nothing really for you to speak on if it's continued.
Yeah, we're doing a continuance.
Well, I would like to make a comment on that. I mean, this has been continued three times. Come down here. I'd like to just put a statement on the record. It's not a very detailed thing, but rather than having to keep coming back. And also, I want to perhaps put the applicant on notice of what my concerns are. So can I speak?
The only reason, Jen, is just because we're doing a continuance from a procedural standpoint, is this something?
Well, it's not, you're not in a public hearing at the moment, so it's, that's completely up to the chair whether or not somebody wants to make a comment about a procedure.
Well, due that they're looking for a continuance due to procedures, if you're looking to comment on the procedure, if you want to keep it relatively brief, I think that would be okay.
Okay, thanks. I'm Roger Hamill from 17 Spruce Lane. Actually, I'm commenting on that, the list of deficiencies in specifically number eight, where he says that the landscaping plan has been completed and accepted. My recollection is that it was not accepted and that the bond was not released, but rather it was a letter of credit that was allowed to lapse because of an oversight of the planning board office at the time procedures. And that's why I would ask that as part of their application, they provide written documentation of when that was accepted. And there were several others here that they had said were accepted, and I think they should provide documentation of when those other deficiencies were, the remedy of those deficiencies has been accepted. Thank you.
Did we vote on the continuance for that?
We did not. Motion to continue the compliance hearing for lot 27 dot four to June 10th? Is that what it was? I might have the wrong one now. Don't worry, I'll make it. There we go.
Second.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Barad?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Papakristous?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Next up, we have. Got my papers out of order here. Looks like we're moving on to board business. We have the circuit writer. Yes. Yep.
Yeah, what happened with, I totally forgot about this, about the change of use. Jen, that letter that we got about the change of use for the building, because they were changing the app, the applicant that was going in there is no longer, and it was just gonna turn into a regular warehouse?
I'm sorry, I'm not really sure what you're referring to.
Business application permit.
It's an application permit for a business to go into building one. They had sent it in.
Uh, I'd have to, honestly, I'd have to go back, Bob, and look at my notes, I've sort of been out of the office for a few days, so I don't wanna comment on something that I'm not fully aware of.
Right, this was for the other, the other side of building one? The smaller side of building one?
Yeah, the sign shop.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is the second unit in building one on twenty-seven three?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, I apologize, it's been several weeks since I've thought about this.
Yep.
It did seem as though the occupancy permit was still obviously needed, but the switching of the business was okay, potentially, but because of it being a new business going in, there may be the requirement of getting a conditional use permit, depending on what the nature of the business is because of the Aquifer District. I did talk to Sam about that, when I spoke with him a few weeks ago.
And I know Sam had done the inspections to the building, and everything was copasthetic with the fact that it, it's just being used as a warehouse.
Okay.
Sam's fully aware of what we're doing there, he's been part of like, the design of the interior, what we needed to do to make it fit to them, to go back from the sign company to the warehouse for JAD auctions, and we're installing all the air handlers right now and everything that they needed, and plus, they're here tonight, so I was wondering. I think it's a simple formality, I don't think there's really anything, shouldn't be anything complicated, they meet all the demands of the building, Sam's actually here, if Sam would like to speak, it's up to him, but...
Yep.
The notice of decision on phase two requires that each new occupant come in for a change of use. At the hearing, the public hearing where Haverhill Leach hearing?
Yes.
They withdrew the name or the, the sign company that was gonna go into the other side, that was not heard, so it's up to the board. Technically, they should be putting in a change of use application for that unit, because it has not been heard by the board. But that is up to the board to decide.
Well, we heard, so we heard the one side with the hearing, right?
Right.
And now, so basically, what you're saying is, on the other side, we're looking to essentially do a change of use?
So, so, right, so you never heard the sign shop, right, 'cause they decided not to come?
Right.
So the building doesn't need to change you, it is a warehouse that's originally specifically supposed to be, and it's now, will just stay what it was originally built, from the original permits, and there's nothing, so when the sign shop came, we needed to change use, 'cause it was gonna be different other than a warehouse, now it just remains a warehouse, so I thought this was pretty simple, just go back to where it was, 'cause it was never changed.
Yeah, because it was never changed, and the nature of the exact business when it was originally approved hasn't shifted, I do agree that it doesn't really trigger your typical change of use requirements, as long as it's getting all of its, you know, building compliance, code compliance, that should be acceptable.
Would we even have jurisdiction on it, though, if it's not a change of use?
Well, that's kind of my point, is that you don't really have jurisdiction over it, because it's not really a change of use.
Right.
If they were putting in, I'm gonna go with, I don't know, a repair shop, then you definitely would have change of use authority.
I, I agree.
You know, like things alike, you really don't, unless the building inspector feels that the planning board should review it, which if he doesn't, then, then you also don't have jurisdiction.
Sam's an eighty, the building inspector. So this, this use is very similar to the prior, well, there was no, there was never a proposed use here, there are business application never came to the planning board, but this is gonna be, you'll see it when, I would imagine, when they go through the application, but it's gonna be like, they're gonna take product in, repackage it, and send it out, so it's like, low hazard, technically, it's a low hazard factory slash, basically, storage. That's all, that's really all it is. So, I would think it's fine to go through the application, 'cause it's a very similar use to warehouse. It's not high hazard, there's no chemicals or anything like that.
Any equipment or machinery or...
Does that bring any clarification?
Yeah.
There might be some, I'll let them speak on that, but...
Well, the density is going down as far as people working there from the original sign shop, but we far exceed what we have.
Right.
I think that's just be there. Okay, so we have a building, and we have a permit, we permit at the side, we, everything Sam's requested is under the air handler stuff, so it's all being done right now.
Which has nothing to do with this, but I think it's, I think it's reasonable for the board to take, to consider the applica, at least let them speak on the application. The business obligations. Can, I just interrupt, because obviously, I wasn't on the board when the original approval happened, we've already approved it for a warehouse at some point, correct?
Well, the initial building was approved, and then we have conditional use permits for every, essentially, every tenant that would be moving in to that building, but because the use that they have here essentially is storage.
When people think a warehouse, they think of a big box, and just anything goes in a warehouse, and that's not true, there's, there's a lot of specific classifications that come into that kind of a building, you know what I mean? But this is low hazard, storage type of use, similar to what you think when you think of warehouse.
So Jen, is it all right to take?
I believe, I mean, I'll listen to the application, but that's what I, from what I understand.
Can we take jurisdiction on this?
Um, there's actually no jurisdiction to take, if you feel that you do want a change of use put in, then they would have to apply for that application. If you feel that one is not necessary, I think you don't need to take any action, and it just goes through the building department.
You, you all set with me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
Because it was, the building was approved, and the conditional use is the same use, it was never changed, so we would just be...
Yeah, I mean, I got no problem from that, could we hear from people who are gonna occupy it, if someone would like to come up and just speak?
Good evening, board, my name is Carla.
My name is Carla. So we just receive products for building, building materials, we're receiving, and then we ship it, pretty much.
So, low number of employees?
Probably like, four, not more than five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And not a lot of trucking? Just what comes in and then how it goes out, correct?
That's correct.
Can you have... No, it just shouldn't be, so you can go...
Sorry.
No, it's okay, Tom, I don't know if you're gonna specifically speak to, like, maybe like, what type of product they bring in and what, what goes out, maybe like, is, if that's part of the application.
Right.
But if they're gonna get approval, you want them to approve.
Can I just interject for a second?
Yeah, we, this, I don't think we really need to continue here, if we don't need to take jurisdiction, then we don't really need to keep that.
Yeah, this is not actually, I mean, I think it doesn't qualify as being under the planning board jurisdiction, so therefore, the applica, there is no application for them to give detail on.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure everybody wishes them well, but I just don't think that this needs to go through the planning board.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll explain a little better, they buy the wholesale stuff that we send back to Home Depot and, and Amazon, they bid on it on auction, they turn around, they sell it, and they box, re-box it, and ship it back out. Do you have, how many trucks, you have, one truck?
One to two.
Yeah, two, two trucks, that's it, so, no, no real big deal, they're straight jobs, just six wheels, alright.
So, I mean, I have no problem with it going just through Sam at this point, because of what we've already done with it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I agree, I don't think there's a need to do a change of use application or anything like that, I think, for, from, for our, from our standpoint, that we're good.
Dennis?
Well, I think, really, there's nothing to decide here, because it's not in our jurisdiction, so we don't...
It would be just left up to the building inspector at this point, right, Jen?
Correct. All in Sam's hands.
Yep.
Thank you, board, I appreciate it.
Sam's, yeah.
Yep. Now... My apologies on that, I totally missed that on the agenda.
We will move on to board business. So, the first thing that we have here is the signing of our circuit rider contract.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just because there's a lot of people that are over here.
Yes.
So there's going to be the two continuances for the next meeting, which will be on the tenth, which deal with the other property that they were talking about, that they're looking for their compliance letters, and then the, the other one as far as the other buildings being put in, in place in lieu of building two.
Sure.
Can I just say, that original building, that one that's up now, I thought only one the CHIA was going in here, the CHIA roof, but there's two different ones?
Two.
Yeah, now, one of the aisles is operation, 'cause like I said, it's not, and after thing that we'll talk about later?
I believe that's for seven to five apartment.
Seven to five, okay, 'cause things like that, we don't know.
Yeah.
And we're directly affected, right, you know, with our house, and the same thing, the aisle and the trees, we were promised to be trees and blocking, you know what I mean, all the lights and everything, I don't, I don't know what they're talking about, only...
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
So we are planting trees, I mean, you're not seeing them fully yet, and the lights, we're taking care of, you should have no doubt.
Lights are much better than they were.
Yes, there's...
But the trees, like I said, they can't be little ones, 'cause you know, they're heavy.
Right, we need to get to the point that we can plant them, there's, they would be planted in the air at this point, so, like I said, as promised, I will do exactly how we have the plans agreed with everybody, and trust me, I'm gonna make sure that you're happy.
And, and we did set the hours.
Yes.
When they came before us the first time.
Yeah.
And we discussed the hours of business time.
If you have any questions, you can ask.
Yeah.
We're good.
That's fine, 'cause I know he said talk to me, but that's fine, I can answer any questions.
Yeah.
But I know we set the hours with them, but I didn't realize there was gonna be more people in that building.
Yeah, it's a very smaller unit that's there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy about those aisles, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's very few, there's very light traffic, there, it's an auction company, so...
Yeah, that's so bad, is the CHIA gonna be on the outside of the building?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Tom.
Have a good night, Mrs. Murray. We'll see you later.
Oh, do you guys need addressing of those mailings? Do we do it here? Or what if...
They'll be sending them out.
'Cause they sent it to the neighbor, the old neighbor.
Yeah.
At ten, and then...
And my neighbor getting some, it's not my hearing name, it's on...
Yes, so they'll go to him, and then we'll mail those out?
Yeah, so make sure, if you can, let him know.
Try to catch him.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So we gotta... Couple things, in terms of board business, the first is the signing of our circuit rider.
Actually, you have acceptance of the minutes.
What's up?
Acceptance of the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
We can do that first.
Is that...
Second it. You muted Dennis.
There we go.
Mr. Barad?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So for this next one?
Next item is the circuit rider contract.
And now Jen wants to get paid.
Well, the provided services have not changed, our rate has gone up, because, to be honest, we lose money on our circuit rider contracts, and even the rate that we are charging doesn't really cover the expense for me or other staff, so our rates have gone up, we are going from what had been a hourly, so we were charging basically monthly for how many hours spent, so now we're gonna go to fixed costs, so you will get still predictable fixed costs for the circuit rider account. In the past couple of years, Newton has benefited from getting a number of grants that have covered some of my time at being at meetings, while also working on specific projects. Unfortunately, you still don't have any grants at this point, so we're not able to sort of supplement, so the overall end of the year cost might be a little bit more than you've seen in the past couple of years because of that, but you will get the full number of hours, and if we don't use them on applications, of which you can charge the applicants my time, we can put it towards other projects like master planning, zoning updates, and I do suspect there will be some zoning updates that may need to occur, simply because of all of the changes in Concord this year. So that's one of my quick summarization.
Sounds good.
Any... So motion to approve the circuit rider contract?
I'll second it.
And to have the chair sign it. Mr. Moran? I'll come back to him. Mr. Barad?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim, do you need me to sign both of these on the...
Yeah, you can sign them now, I'll sign in the witness line later.
Okay.
I just got something real quick before we go.
We actually, we have one other little bit of housekeeping here.
Sure.
Although it might make sense for you to say what you'd like to say first, because we have to enter a closed hearing here.
No, it's just real, sure, just real quick, I went to the Planning Commission, the Rocket and Planning Commission meeting last, this past Thursday, and there's a project that's in the books, that's between, it's in... it's in, it still falls in the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight period in Newton. They're replacing Wilders Grove Bridge over the County Pond. They actually, um, increased the funding by over three hundred thousand dollars. So it's over a million dollars for that bridge now. So that's still happening.
Which bridge is that?
Um, Wilders Grove Road. Wilders Grove Road. Over County Pond, so it goes over the pond. I'm not sure where Wilders Grove Road is.
Down towards the end.
No, it's not over the train tracks. It's the other one?
Yeah, Wilders, Wilders.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't, uh, County Pond, no, turns in.
Yeah, yeah, it must be, yeah.
And it's towards the very end of Wilders Grove.
Oh, right next to Kingston there? Yeah.
Yes.
So because of, which is good, they increased it to three hundred, it's actually three hundred and almost fourteen thousand dollars. Um, the biggest thing that they're saying is inflation is going from three point seven percent to four point four percent over the next ten years for, through the ten year plan. So the DOT is looking at a four hundred million dollar shortfall on projects that are in the ten year plan right now. So they kind of, not kind of, they told us that if there are projects that we want to get in, we should keep applying for them and put them in there. But, um, it's all going to depend on what happens in Concord with money and stuff like that, but.
Yep. Squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Mm.
I mean, we're already getting our corners fixed. Yep.
You know, there's a, the, the other ones are in there too, the other intersections, uh, New Boston Road and, and, um, draw a blank, the other one down here too.
Peaslee.
Peaslee, right.
It'll get fixed a little bit faster. We'll make it happen overnight, but it will make it get fixed faster if you are vocal about it and participate, which Newton generally has. So.
Yeah.
Good job.
You know, and just, it, so things are happening. Hopefully, um, four hundred million dollars is a lot of dough to try and find.
Yep.
Custis, forgive me, the, the other two intersections where those, those weren't on the twenty twenty-eight plan.
They're not.
They were a little bit further out, right?
Yeah, they're, they're way out there, like at the end of the twenty-five year plan.
Yeah, which it'll, it'll be, it'll be double the cost by then.
They take a lot of things into, and factor a lot of things, safety in, in those two intersections. That's huge. So.
These two that they're doing right now, I mean, you see like a collision there a couple of times a month on one of them.
Yeah. So that's about it. If there's things out there, we can just keep applying for them and it sounds like it's going to be late this fall, November, maybe even December, before they know exactly what's going to happen with funding.
Um, I will let folks know that RPC just completed our safety action plan, which is sort of a precursor to opening up potentially billions of dollars in federal, um, funds that become available once you've completed that. And we only recently did complete that work. Um, we're waiting for the other planning commissions to catch up. And then everyone in the state of New Hampshire will be able to apply, but it just, we'll bring more federal dollars into New Hampshire for road safety improvements. So that doesn't fix all things, but it does help with some projects.
Nice.
Yeah. You know, like even, even something like one oh eight, it wouldn't hurt to apply on doing one oh eight from the, from the Plastile line to the East Kingston line and getting that in there, even if it's phased out. But just, just like the way Plastile got it done from Haverhill to the Newton line, you know, just at least get it out there, apply for it and it's all, I mean, that would be, that, those, that would be a big, it's a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
But that needs a lot of work. But these little bridges and stuff, if there's things like that, that we know about, that we should, we can apply for all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, without a doubt.
That's it, my friend.
Sounds good. Thank you. Um, so one more thing before we leave here.
We wanted to go into non-public.
Yeah, so we need to go into.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public ninety-one dash A colon three under M.
Second. Mr. Moran. Mr. Barad.
There you go. Aye.
Mr. Barad.
Aye.
Mr. Mashon.
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus.
Aye.
Mr. Eddy.
Aye.
That's unanimous at seven fifty-five.
Since you are going into non-public.